Okay, thank you. It's Tuesday, July 20th. We'll call the meeting to order. This is an in-person and also a video conference meeting. And we'll go to our first item. The first item tonight is a resolution. This is the resolution on the Simpson application. Thirty-five Hammond Ridge, an application for a site development plan approval, an application for stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control. And we last heard this on July 6th. We closed the public hearing and I think we're here really to discuss, we did close the public hearing, right? Yes. We're here to discuss, at this point, I think, just the resolution. Has the applicant had a chance to look at the resolution?
Yep, thank you so much. We sent back some comments which were incorporated and all is in order and on front.
Okay.
We have some precision questions, but nothing to change.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members on this application or this resolution?
I'm curious what the changes were because I can't, I don't see them yet.
Felicia can tell us, I think. They're relatively minor, as I understand.
They were minor?
Yeah, it's in that second copy.
On the second page, the third whereas clause, I don't have the draft in front of me, it was just changed. I think that was the unchanged part.
Yeah, there was a requirement to the coverage. We wanted to make sure that it was clearly laid out.
Okay. And so you're satisfied with it?
Yes, I reviewed everything. It's in order to the most recent of the plans.
Great. So I just had a question for clarification, just to make sure I understand it, I think I do. But in the old version, which is on page two, you talked about removal of some impervious surfaces.
We did, we did. And so I simplified it a little bit.
Okay.
And just kind of subtracted, I kind of took out kind of what they had proposed to subtract and then add back in the net language. It was confusing.
Yes, yeah. And I just wanted to make sure we knew where it was coming from.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so then I went through and I just clarified everything, what was being mitigated, what wasn't. And then the last meeting, the board had added the additional square footage, impervious coverage.
For the driveway.
For the driveway.
Right.
So that was spoken.
But the walkway in the back and the rear turnaround, that's still something that's coming out?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
So does that, just for clarification, does that mean on page two, line 41, that the development coverage of eighty-three oh eight includes that extra hundred feet?
The eighty-three oh eight is your two thousand three.
The eighty-three, two thousand three?
That whereas clause relates to what you approved in two thousand three.
Oh, I see, right. The additional fifteen percent gets you to eighty-three oh.
Correct.
Thank you.
And so then we carry through from that point.
So we're at eighty-seven sixteen now?
Correct.
On page three, line thirty?
Correct. And that includes the additional area.
So there's a net add of like four hundred and change.
Five hundred and thirty-seven point two.
Okay.
After the one hundred foot for the driveway?
After the hundred feet.
Yeah.
After the hundred feet.
Got it.
Great.
Right, and the plans that are referenced in this resolution reflect all of those changes, subtractions, additions, so it's all consistent.
Okay, great.
No, I verified all of that yesterday.
Okay. Super, thank you.
So I'd just like to say that, you know, while we hesitate to grant these sort of increases in coverage, it seems to me that for an extra five hundred square feet of coverage, the town gets another, what, almost thirty-five hundred square feet of land which is now devoted to natural landscape is a great bonus for the town. I think it's a win-win for us. I hope that you guys, the applicant, feels the same way. We want to thank you for your working with us on all this.
No, of course, we're happy to have the change as well, both ways.
Great. Okay, any other questions, issues on the resolution? If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution as revised in the second revision that we have this afternoon?
So moving.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motions counted, you're all set. Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is the informal appearance before the board. This is the Reichman, twelve sixty-seven Hard Scrabble Road, application for a site development plan approval, wetlands permit, tree permit for addition with an indoor spa. And we last heard this on May 18th. And we were out there, I think, over the Memorial Day weekend. Was that our site visit? I can't recall the exact date. But anyway, we were there. And so we had a good discussion out there, we had some suggestions. We look forward now to see what we have now from the applicant.
We submitted, we submitted and we addressed the issue of that tree and the possibility of relocating or adjusting to the work in order to, number one, save the tree and number two, be further away from the stream. And actual plan, as an alternative, that we, in that case, we would be like right on top of the property line. And we already needed only variance of twenty feet, so it's just not possible. And all the other issues, our environmental compunction will address. And we have been in contact with Dennis repeatedly and hopefully will come to some resolution or agreement on what mitigation is.
So on that issue of, just while you were there, I saw that you mentioned, I think basically it was, you gave us a quick sketch and I think there's a paragraph in here where an alternative location was suggested by a planning board member, I think a couple of us, during the site visit and as a possible ways to save the maple tree as well as keeping the addition further from the stream, which is not further from the stream, but out of the wetland, in the wetland buffer. So the alternative location was studied and is shown on page four, which indicates the footprint would be at the rear property line, which is of course a concern, but I think you have to go for a variance anyway. And also on a rocky ledge in an area of moderately steep slope. For these reasons, this location is considered unsuitable. It seems to me that there might be some halfway measures here that we could also look at. I don't want to grind this thing into some sort of major issue, but, you know, we were out there, we talked about different sizes in terms of decks and different locations, I mean, not different locations, but different measurements. It seems to me that the sketch is a little disappointing to me in that it's like a straw dog that's set up to fail. But we'll wait to hear from others on that. But I just, I didn't want to let that go without making that comment.
Yeah, to add to that, I think I mentioned in the field trip, there was a patio, and I don't see the purpose of the patio other than it might be of interest, of interest to put a couple chairs there. So that's one thing. I looked a little bit more at the amount of the property that's back around by the garage. And there's a patio there that's, you know, is outside of the wetland setback. And I'm curious whether, you know, with proper screening, whether, you know, the spa couldn't be added to that portion of the house.
That's where the septic is? Is that what you mean?
Well, up.
Or up right, maybe will be the front yard or boundary.
The way the house is built, we'd have to re-figure the entire side of the house and we decided that it just was infeasible, it was not feasible with the house structure.
Well, I'd like to see something in the future as to, you know, how that really works out because to me, a spa is separate, you know, and if it can be attached to, you know, a walkway or a covered walkway or a building that, you know, attaches to a back door, you know, then that might work. Another thought I have is that there's a, there's part of the house that looks like it was attached at some time after the original house was built, and that leads to the spa. And I'm curious as to why can't that be removed or reduced in size? But, you know, one of the other concerns I have is that, you know, the, to me, building in a wetland setback is more of a problem than having extra hard stand be created on a property. We just had a case that we talked about where the owners were, the applicant, were quite happy to create a habitat and a more natural set of conditions on part of their property. And it was like over a factor of five for that as opposed to the wetland, which the setback, that bothers me because I don't really want to set a precedent, you know, for, you know, everything, you know, that's that big or anything that's that big. So that's my two cents.
A question I have is about the neighbors at ninety-five Valley Lane. Has there been any interaction with them? Do they know about this? Do they, have they expressed any concerns or support?
Well, they've gotten their notification, just like all of the neighbors who bought the property, and they haven't said anything.
Okay, but I, it seems like ninety-five Valley would be the neighbor that would be most impacted. Is that fair to say?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and we haven't gotten anything from them?
No.
In our, is this one?
I think that's on.
Yeah, in our site visit, we noted that. And from the position of where the proposed pool structure would go, there was, it was clear that that building is, looks right down on. And it looks like it's a family room and looks like these are sort of the living areas.
You can see it in this photo.
There you go. Living areas of the house at the lower level look right down on there. And this building, this pool building is going to be relatively large, I think, with respect to that. And, you know, nighttime, also winter time, when there's like no leave out, right, there would be, it'll be really very visible. Now, the fact that the neighbors haven't shown up or made comment yet is interesting, but I don't think it's like dispositive. I mean, I think we have our own responsibilities, right?
Agreed a hundred percent.
Right. So I'm really very disappointed in the drawing which you submitted as the alternative to your proposal, which represents some of the ideas that we talked about, the planning board talked about with you when we were out there with you. It really is inadequate, I think, is inadequate for, I think, anybody actually to make an informed determination about the feasibility of it, about the rationality of it. I think that we need to see something more. And I would suggest that you work, that you work directly with the town staff and maybe they can help you, let you know the kinds of materials that I think the staff, as well as the planning board, would need to see in order for us to be sure that we know that we're doing the right thing here.
That we even discuss moving it to the other side of the house? I don't recall even that coming up.
Not in a field trip, that's true.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting the materials you, the material, the only thing I see is page four here in your eight and a half by eleven handout as a drawing of the alternative which was discussed out there. Not moving it to the other side of the house, but moving it on that, moving it and making it a little bit smaller on that side of the house where you already had it located.
Well, one thing I just want to mention is that if the patio is a problem, then we don't need to do the patio, it's not a really big deal.
Okay.
Well, we're trying to reduce the amount of intrusion.
Yeah.
On wetland setback. And we'd like to eliminate it in, I would like to eliminate it in totality, but.
And if that is eliminated.
Eliminate what? The patio?
Yeah, if you eliminate the patio, does it give you more flexibility in terms of placement of the spa and the structure for the spa?
No, it would not. It would not impact it at all, really.
Yeah.
And patio, just, isn't like.
Well, you could pivot the building itself and place the spa in a different angle perpendicular to what you have proposed here. I don't know if it works or not, but that would serve two purposes. It would reduce the amount of impact in the buffer. It would also move the impact further away from the stream, the actual wetland itself. Now, you know, everyone says, well, it's just a stream, et cetera, but it's more than that. It's a wetland, but it's also, it feeds into the watershed. And if we looked away at everything in the watershed, we wouldn't have water to drink. So it's really, it's important from that standpoint, and that's why we're really struggling here to work with you. I think the idea of having this spa is fantastic for you. I love it. I think it'd be a wonderful addition.
One second question though, I want you to say, the reason that we didn't move the patio closer to the property line and the neighbors is because the rocky ledge and also because of the property line, the setback on that corner. So we were advised to move it away from that a little bit. And if we moved it more, it would be more in the wetlands. So this was the farthest away from the wetlands that we could come up with without encroaching on the neighbors more and giving that rocky ledge at the corner. So, yeah, patio isn't important and that's fine. But that's why we got that angle.
And the one we slide it back, the closer we come to the property line, the pool. And no matter how we moved it, that's, it's kind of follows the shape of the rock ledge. So I think we're just, it's a difficult site.
Well, it is a difficult site. You're right about that. There's some slope going down to the stream bed, there's a rock outcropping, the proximity of the property line, the angles of everything, the neighbor. All of these things make it sort of a complex puzzle to solve. And that's why I think that we don't have adequate information right now with respect to an alternative and what the alternative, how the alternative fits or doesn't fit in the context of all of those concerns. And I have a problem because I think if, personally, I think if the planning board were to accept this as a drawing of an alternative proposal, that we would be setting a precedent which would be unfair to all the people who've come before us who have given us, made the real effort, given us the information that we need to have. And I just think that this is inadequate in terms of the information that we're being given, and it's improper in terms of the kind of submission that it is for us.
It's very strange to me that when we had the visit, nobody mentioned making a huge change in the location. And in fact, various plans were phrased as being so thorough. So it's just a kind of shock to hear that now we have to go back to the drawing board and since the basis for this is a health concern, it's really upsetting to feel like we have to be put back, you know, another year.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I have to disagree with you. A different location was talked about specifically, was talked about for the spa structure out there with you and with your consultant. And we, perhaps you weren't there with the consultant when we were having the conversation, but was addressed with your team. And the drawing which is submitted here is on page number four, represents that. That is the location that we thought should be studied. So it was discussed.
I meant on the other side of the house.
Well, we're not talking about the other side of the house, we're talking about here now. I don't think anybody's suggesting that this ought to be put on the other side of the house now.
I did.
But you want to have that as an option?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, excuse me, I feel, yes, it's very schematic, but it is accurate on this, on page four. The red mark, the mark aids exact location that you discussed, so it's thirty feet away or.
I don't know what else to say.
But it pulls, it's further back from the tree because you were, I just have the impression you guys all wanted to save that tree. And that was the location you discussed, which is where I placed it to show you that it is not feasible, it is not a good idea, it is not, we would never get approval from the zoning board if I have, thirty blocks people involved.
Well, I'm not gonna.
I just think it creates a worse problem. This is not a solution. So why spend money and time to delve further into an alternative that's clearly impossible to execute?
Well.
Space of time.
Fine, fine, but again, to Tom's point, and again, I raised it before, if the patio is not going to be constructed, if we ignore that, and if we place the structure and the spa again in an angle that is perpendicular to what you have here proposed, and we use that space that has been used for the patio, and basically come out of your, that extended building that was added, that Dick mentioned looked like it had been added, and come out of that room at a different angle, it seems to me that you accomplish a number of things. We pull it further out of the wetland buffer, we might be able to save the tree. I think it would not be anywhere near as extreme as this proposal appears for being close to the edge of the property line, which I agree is going to be, is a problem. And I think you're very correct in saying that is going to be a problem with the zoning board. So that's another part of this puzzle.
Okay, so you're saying that you come out the front of the house?
I don't know what that, I don't know. There's an addition there, you have windows there on that.
Yeah, that's facing Hard Scrabble Road, that's the front of the house.
Okay, so it's not a regular pool where we're concerned about a pool being in the front yard. It's a structure so that the spa or the water pool is inside. So that's not an issue. And it seems to me that architecturally, it could somehow be blended with that addition, that structure. And instead of coming out to the side, which is what the south side, it comes out a little bit further on the west side of that addition.
I believe I would come closer to the wetlands. And that's farther away. It's right down there at an angle, it's way away from the stream, from the wetlands.
Just go this way. The pool on this way.
The wetlands being quite close to the top of the stream bed because it's marked by rocks. It is not a flat swampy area. It is very, very clear and blocked.
Well, I'd like to suggest that, I still think that the material we have is not sufficient for us to make any kind of a determination. So I think that there needs to be some work here. I think that the question is what work needs to be done in terms of what the planning board would like to see so that you're not spinning your wheels and we don't want to, we really don't want to spin your wheels. And if you could, and also if you could sit down, I'm going to ask Sabrina if it'd be appropriate for you to sit down with staff so that they could help you work out some of these issues.
I think it might be helpful as you're talking, Tom, if the applicant could share their screen and show the plan.
That's a good idea.
You know, and that way you can point out specifically how you think it is deficient and it will help guide a revision. You know, staff are happy to sit down and go through it with them, you know, at any time, but I think if they could share their screen, it would make this conversation a little bit more clear for them.
If you could, if you could show, if you have it, if you could show page four, which has that sketch.
That's not in this one. Which one is it? Put it here, put it here.
I'm sorry.
Take up the patio.
This one.
Architectural challenge.
The page, page four in, the wetland permit application.
Are you guys able to share your screen?
We'll try.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else while they do that?
Well, I mean, I don't know what's going to be tougher, getting us to agree to it or getting the ZBA to give them, you know, something where the, you know, the structure butts the backyard line, you know, where it's all tree anyway.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm sorry, I'm unable to do it.
Okay. I agree that we shouldn't send them into a no answer from the ZBA. There's no point in doing that.
Okay, but then.
But I, but I'm not sure that I really understand yet just how close they need to be to that property line because the material that's in front of us really doesn't describe that that I can see.
Ma'am.
In order to accommodate our concerns.
Yeah.
Unless somebody can help with that.
This is a tommy's. Okay. So just do this. Uh. That takes care of. I don't think you can really try. What does it do? I think it's got an idea too. Well, I can do that. No, I just don't know.
So there seems to be an issue with them sharing the screen?
Yeah, yeah. So they're saying, yeah, this porch should come off here. Take down the wetland. Come up here, I'm sorry.
So you have an email company, Harry?
As an alternative.
Yeah, the only concern that I had about that is that it's a spa structure facing the stream location and people, you know, spa's private.
So it's already been identified that this is a tough site, right? We can acknowledge that, that the applicant has acknowledged that, that there are a lot of challenges associated with the site. And the question is, you know, there's a desire to include an addition, the spa here. There are issues with that, right? There are issues for us, there'll be issues for the zoning board of appeals. And the question is, what are the possible alternatives? We've been, there's a proposal, and then there's this kind of half-alternative which has already been deemed not feasible. And that's, that's fine.
Can you see it?
Your screen, no.
You were sharing it and then it disappeared.
Is it on now? Can you see it?
It is not.
It clearly has a mind of its own.
Oh, gosh.
But I guess I would just say that, you know, if there are, if there are alternatives that can, I guess, mitigate some of the concerns, then we would love to see them. I, you know, some of my fellow board members here are sketching on their materials, coming up with ideas. There's a lot of smart people in the room and on the call, and maybe, you know, maybe there's a solution here. I'm always looking for a way to get to yes. There's not always a way to get to yes, but, you know, there might be here, but there are a lot of hurdles. So there are, you know, my recommendation is that, you know, you guys come up with a handful of alternatives and maybe identify all the issues that have already been discussed in ways that some of the alternatives address them. There's not going to be a perfect solution here, that's pretty clear, but maybe there's a way to get there and some mitigating factors, but.
You know, it sort of, I'm sorry.
I think you're good.
Is that Ben?
Yeah.
The sketch that you provided, no, we're looking, I'm looking for the one, the hand-drawn sketch that shows over the site plan that shows in red, the location.
I can't seem to be able to share it, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's on my screen, but I can't.
No, no, we see your screen now, but it's not the one Tom's asking for, but we do see your screen, so that's.
That's good.
This is loud, it's screen.
Let's go.
Your screen is this?
That's the, that's the actual proposal.
Let's not spend time on it.
All right.
Yeah, I think, yeah, let's move on. So how do we move on?
I think that the board can direct the applicant to work with staff, you know, to kind of show some alternatives based on your direction tonight. And so if you can clearly summarize your direction for the applicant so they can redraw and then. and then with staff, we can ensure that they are addressing your concerns and we can put them on the agenda at the time that they have...
I think that's the most efficient way to move forward for them, right? Otherwise, we're gonna be spinning our...
Absolutely. So if you can just outline a summary so that they can understand what you're asking for...
Yeah, we owe them some sort of direction here.
Sure, absolutely. Dick, you wanna talk about your alternative and say...
Yeah, I'm still thinking that, I'd like to know why it can't be done, you know, sort of behind the garage and just inside of the wetland setback, which would eliminate that as a problem and also would eliminate the need for cleaning up the area.
The septic system is there.
Pardon me? The septic system?
The septic is there.
The septic system is between the existing garage and the patio?
Yes, well, we're...
No, I see on your drawing, you know, that the approximate location of the septic tank is...
Downhill from there.
Downhill.
Yeah, it's in the flat.
So I'm confused by that. I guess we need somebody to outline exactly where the piping is, you know, for the next meeting we have. And the tanks, there's a tank and an overflow tank, I believe, right?
And the field must be down here.
Well, who knows where the field is, but that's where it should be.
Yeah, right, somehow, somewhere.
Okay, so my sense is that, take a hard look at that. I mean, right now you have an existing patio.
Right, it's high, it's on, it's, that's all ledge, right there. All rock, ledge.
But instead of trying to solve this, can we just outline the actual, the concerns and then let them try to come up with alternatives?
Yeah, the concern is, from my perspective, is that we would be, we would like to be out of the wetland setback.
Yes, that's one.
If, if we have to be in it, then the amount of exposure in the wetland has to be small, and smaller than it is beyond taking out the patio. And it, and it has to come up with some, some thinking as to, if it's built on ledge, then is that a difference as to the, you know, the value of the wetland setback if it's really just going up the ledge? Dennis, I don't know if you have a thought on that, but, you know, the, the grass and the, and the front and everything else is, is still a place where rainwater is collected and goes down to the, you know, eventually, you know, to a reservoir.
Right, I mean, as far as what you're speaking about, I guess avoid is the first step in our process.
Right.
So, you know, I don't, I'm certainly not a structural and geotechnical engineer, but obviously rock can be built in at some level, you know. So if there's a question of how you would look to install something and avoid wetlands and the consequences, you know, putting to rock and, you know, whatever trees may or may not even be, you know, at exposed ledge, I think it's a fair evaluation assessment to make to determine, you know, this will be the consequences. If we put it here, there would be no consequences to the wetlands. What's the net result?
Right, okay.
Can't do that at this time, you're correct.
Right. So I think the issue in terms of, we're hearing it's ledge here, ledge there, we would need to see that. Tell us what it is. Tell us what the quantity of the ledge is. What is the challenge? It seems to me that these are architectural and design challenges, but they're not insurmountable. Again, keeping our goals in mind, we're trying to avoid, and if we can't avoid, mitigate as much as possible, limit and then mitigate as much as possible.
So that's one, there's the wetlands.
Yep.
There's the trees, right? They're trying to protect those two trees.
There was one, one particular tree.
One or two?
One particular tree, that was a specimen tree that was an issue. And I think Tom raised that very clearly during the visit.
Right. The proximity to the, to the property line?
Yes, that's always a concern, right? Because we, yeah, exactly.
When they send them to the ZBA and so...
Well, with the hopes that, with a, with a recommendation for approval, so that, you know, this is the best we think, think we can do here, yes. Very good point.
And in conjunction with that, how it relates to the neighbor.
Right. So those, that's sort of the list?
Those are the four issues.
And those are, by the way, those are the issues that we spoke to you about that day on properties, so we're just sort of restating that, those, that list. And I think that with respect to solutions for that, one would be reorienting the building, and the other would be relocating the building, putting it on the other side where the existing porch is. Now, if that can't be done, then it can't be done. And you can work with staff and demonstrate to them why it can't be done, and then that alternative is off the table. Just talk to staff about it, and if there's a, if there's a house drain that goes to the, to the, to the septic system, I don't think we would ask you to relocate that. I think that that would be not the right thing to do. If there's ledge in an area where it can't be, where this can't be done, then we need to know that.
Well, there might be ledge there that actually is useful because you're not gonna have septic, a septic field in the ledge.
Right. So it's, it's, it's up to you now to come back in response to that set of criteria and, and the direction that we're giving you for suggestions for solutions. And the drawing you submitted just is not adequate for that purpose.
Right. And doesn't exhaust the alternatives that we talked about this evening, which might be solutions. And I just want to add that there are can'ts and then there are cans. Cants just based on preference when we're dealing with a very constrained site really doesn't meet the measure of what we use as our standards. So it can't really means engineering-wise, we can't do it because that really is where the septic is, or it poses other issues that are really insurmountable. But I think some of the alternatives that have been posed this evening are not insurmountable. I think they're consistent with what you want to do, what we would like to grant you approval for, but we have to do it within the framework of our, of our regulations. And again, a real bona fide look at these alternatives is what we really want to see. But we also had, and I know you have your wetlands person here, so I think we should look at that side of it as well. I think we've, I think we've exhausted the, the structure issue, but I know that there were some issues that we want to, that Dennis has worked on with their consultant, and why don't we hear about those and see if we can at least get that portion of this resolved, if that makes sense to people. So is Alexandra on? I see her name there, but maybe she's...
Maybe she doesn't want to.
Okay.
Fair to speak.
But Dennis, you want to just comment on what you've seen so far in terms of the environmental side, in terms of the wetlands and the proposal?
So in terms of, you know, looking, I guess, at the application that was submitted, so there was the dual, it was a double dual. There's the dual process of satisfying tree replacement and wetland mitigation for the project that's proposed. And then there's the second dual satisfying the wetland mitigation for the 2012 permit for the prior structure, which was not satisfied according to that permit condition and incorporating it into this application. I started just looking at the tree replacement and, you know, understanding those limitations with respect to, you know, visiting the property and, you know, seeing sort of the amount of exposed, you know, bedrock understandably. I could see where, you know, planting a green screen, you know, for a number of trees where that would be a problem, but in consideration of the site, I just, you know, because if the applicant is gonna be looking at the alternative to donate to the Tree Bank Fund, you know, maybe we could take advantage of the shrub provision and do, you know, some more planting, albeit not in such a design fashion, but to try to find spots, you know, where you could accommodate shrub here, shrub there, you know, but obviously tough to do at a desktop level. You need to sort of apply that in the field. So that was just a consideration, just to get more than just the one tree in consideration of where it was to the property line. As, as far as the wetlands, I was, you know, it's a continuation of support from the 2012 application, which was, you know, to come up with a buffer area for the stream that, you know, wouldn't be maintained as turf cover, to kind of make it more meadow and would have to be at a, at a certain width. We're still having some, I guess, discussion as to what the numbers would be to approach a, in this case, a one-to-one replacement ratio for both, for both applications. So I'm not gonna go into that now as far as the numbers, but as far as the approach, I was looking to, I guess in both cases, just raise the size of the trees that were proposed to be planted, you know, both the holly for the tree replacement and the birches for the wetland restoration. And I also felt from, from looking at the, just looking at the area, you know, similarly, you know, the area's been mowed for a while, so just to sort of sit back and accept the regeneration in the absence of, you know, not really knowing what, what is going to regenerate, you know, it could be something that, you know, is more associated with how it's been maintained. It's, you know, so I think that there's, again, opportunity to do some, you know, just some spot, spot plantings of, you know, both from a functional value for wetlands and even from an aesthetic value, just, you know, more pollinator species that, you know, not, not tear up the area and look to recede, but more with, with planting. That would be, you know, less invasive, less disturbance, but really, I think add to the, add to the purpose of why you're, you know, sort of restoring that stream edge as a, as a unmoed, filter-stripped, natural, vegetative, meadow-type community. So I was fine with the, with the approach. I was just trying to fortify a bit, you know, some of the areas that were selected and what was...
I, I think you're, you're on the right track. The, the thought I have is that if we're gonna allow construction, you know, in the wetland setback, is there a way to logically say, well, if it's on ledge, then the ledge is not really operating as wetland setback? But I would think that, you know, the way we handle a few other projects, one of them this morning, I'm sorry, this, the first thing this evening, we have a higher ratio, you know, for these exceedances, you know, than, you know, just, you know, a small area that's, you know, beyond the, you know, the wetland, so, you know, and it's in the wetland setback. So it's maybe on the other side of the creek, there might be ways to, to get rid of the invasives and work there and bring the multiplier up much, you know, because we used a multiplier of five, you know, for the other projects, and, you know, because they were beyond, you know, what they were allowed to have in the way of hard stand, which is, I don't think it's an issue here because this property piece is so large that you escape it, but think about that too, please.
Sure. Okay. I think we're on the right track though, on, at least on that side of it. I really do. That sounds good. Thank you, Dennis. Sabrina, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I think that, you know, a lot of the zoning compliance and the coverage issues is gonna result based on the final plan that they could be...
Right.
...in the wording says.
Okay. Bob, any comments?
I have no comment.
Okay. Very good. Okay. So what we'd like to do is, if you would, as soon as you get that additional information to us, we'll get going and put you on the agenda and hopefully we can move this thing forward.
I have a question.
Sure.
We are, we're scheduled, well, the agenda for the zoning board next Friday, or next thir-, next, next week? Um, would you proceed with that?
I, I would advise you not to proceed with that because we're not sure what you're asking the zoning for yet.
Right. You don't have a plan yet.
Right, there's no setbacks that the zoning board could opine on.
Exactly. I think it'd be a waste of time and money to appear before the zoning board at this time until you have a plan that this board is comfortable with.
At our last, at our last meeting or presentation or appearance, we were advised to go proceed with the zoning variance because they only meet once a month, we meet twice a month. We were given the go-ahead to do that and we...
I understand, I understand, but at this point in time, your plan has changed from the, the meeting where the board advised you to seek your variance, there was a site visit that was conducted, and the, the plans that were submitted changed the twenty-foot setback request to a thirty-foot setback request. And now the board is asking you to revisit and try and reduce that even more so if possible.
No, the setback, actually, what you were advising, or what you had suggested brought it closer, brought it right to the...
That's only one alternative. That's only one alternative. You heard Mr. Brown now give you a full description of another alternative which would keep you out of the zoning board altogether. So you should...
Excuse me, no, wait, no, who puts right to the front yard? Because valley lane is considered a front. And so there we have the setback, so we are, we are...
We don't have a plan, and I don't know how you can make that, make that statement when we don't have a plan, you haven't looked at the plan, you haven't even done a sketch of it. So I don't know how you can come up with that kind of a statement and expect this board to swallow that. That's crazy.
There are two front yards.
Yeah, there are two front yards, but I didn't say, but we don't have a draw, you need to know what we have.
But at this point...
But when you have site plan, you can see exactly where it is. It is right to the front yard.
Right, but at this point, if I may, at this point, you still need to come up with a plan that this board is comfortable with, which may or may not change the variances that you need to request from the zoning board. To appear before them next week is disingenuous because you don't know what you need to ask of them.
The planning, the zoning board in all likelihood is going to ask us for our recommendations on this. And if you appear before them, and I think our response is gonna be, we don't even have a site plan that we have been able to review yet that, that allows us to help the applicant make decisions by which they can go to the zoning board. So it may sound like we're being argumentative, but actually we're not. We're trying to help you figure out how to go through the process, and you just, you just need to follow our recommendations.
Well, that's what you did last time.
Our recommendations are, you sit down with the town staff, and they will guide you through the process, and that's what they're there for.
But you didn't say that last time.
Well, we're saying that now. We are saying that now.
Last time we hadn't had a site visit.
We are saying that now.
Yeah, and at the site visit, we...
And at this point, actually, you're being argumentative. We're trying to help you. So I can't see any purpose in us having any more discussions on this application at this time.
Right.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay. All right, thank you, so we'll, we'll see you on the next time we hear that we're all set. Yep, well, I don't think we're gonna schedule a time yet to be set.
No, no.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Okay, we move now to our next item, and this is Nakish, maybe Nikish, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly, Two Meadow Hill Way. This is application for a site development plan approval and an application for stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control. And all I can say, Alan, is I...
You got us in a good mood.
I, I, I respect your severity. What does it take to get rid of you? We've approved this how many times and you keep coming back like the Joe Frazier of environmental people?
It's like 2004.
Exactly.
Yeah. Fourteen, maybe?
It's 2009, 2014.
What does it take?
I don't know. And it all goes back to 2014.
Oh, goodness sake, yeah, that's... I thought we'd have a computer here so I could project something.
Yeah, unfortunately we do not.
But I'm assuming, assuming as soon as we were here, I'm here, you said, don't give them a computer because you never know, work it very well. I figured that's what you said.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't think we meant that somehow, but...
No.
Anyway.
Unfortunately, we're trying to get the hybrid meeting going.
It's okay. It's wonderful, see everybody. So with me also is Scott Kirchner and Brian Nakish are both here as well. And you want me to just run through it? I, I thought I would have a screen, be able to do it, but even have these things...
I think the thing is, I mean, what we're doing is we're looking at a, a site plan that has some minor changes from what was approved before. If you could just emphasize and tell us what the changes are, then Bob could say no, and then we move on.
Okay. So I'll just say, proposed house, as you probably see from the site plan that we submitted, is located in the northwest portion of the property, generally in the same location as the prior house in the 2014 approval. And I think I showed it on drawing C-101 where the old house was. Access came from the redraw... Access came from the driveway, which will connect to the turnaround at the end of Meadow Way. It's located, the driveway will essentially be located once a moment line area of that property. I will say, there's a wetland area in the eastern portion of the lot, and we're staying completely outside of the wetland, a wetland buffer area. And, I think it is, that's part of the plan, it's to be done. The proposed house is a lot too larger than the house which was approved in 2014. The building coverage was calculated at 6,039 square feet. The total resolution in 2014 has permitted a 10% allowance for building coverage, which, which would be 6,039 square feet, so already that'd be permitted allowance amount. I did see also the note from, a memorandum from Sabrina with regards to development coverage. I agree with her assessment, somehow I, you know, you think of the spreadsheet, you do it correctly.
Bingo.
Sometimes things happen. It's 127 square feet over, we'll do some adjustments for it. It's not a lot, but we can, we can make some adjustments for it, clear how we do that. I checked it, I got home, I can't believe it, but it happens. Properties, the property, the house will be served by water, which is already in Meadow Way, as you know. Wastewater will be conveyed by a pump chamber to the existing sanitary sewer, which is, actually runs through lot number one, but the connector is on lot number three in an easement area. So, that's what's also to be done. Other utilities will just be taken from Meadow Hill Way. I'll just say, it is proposed to relocate the existing drainage swale to the north of the house, because that was really done by Unicorn to sort of address a drainage issue that was ongoing five years ago. Totally. So, it's functioned reasonably well, conveyed the flows there, but we're actually just proposing to relocate it.
Alan, I'm sorry, can you speak into your microphone? Thank you.
Is it on?
It's on. You have to speak into it though.
Okay, sorry, apologize. Don't sound like.
Once you get that down, we'll get the computer.
Yes. One step at a time. I'll just say, as a belt and spenders approach here, we're also proposing to put a curb on the easterly side of the cul-de-sac, so, and a catch basin there, so it'll actually collect the flow, put it into a storm drainage pipe, convey it to the stormwater management basin, basin number two, which is already in place. And so, we'll not only just re, you know, have it collected in the catch basin and drainage system, but also just relocating the swale, so it's, I'll say, a more, better location. And, and I'll just say, the property will use the stormwater management basin number two, which is constructed for the, essentially the drainage from the house on lot number two and also the easterly half of the house on lot number three. The house on lot number three, of course, has a fire retention basin, which is volume control, and then gets conveyed into the stormwater management basin. I understand there were some, they'll see some modifications to the drainage calculations, that'll be done, as I explained to Bob earlier today. Those basins, basin number one and basin number two are essentially oversized. The reason is, it's an extended detention basin that was designed in accordance with the DEP and DEC regulations, and they're kind of oversized because you have to sort of account for the water quality volume, and the water quality volume has its own dimensional requirements, and that's why they're oversized. So, you know, modifying the rainfall amounts, like with how you're storm, it'll still easily fit in there, it just won't. And that's essentially the changes. So, the house is slightly bigger, it's essentially the same location, you know, there's no disturbance other than what Ellen Buffer is before.
Any changes in clearing rating limit lines?
No, it's actually about the same.
All the same?
Really, it's very similar. So, that's, that's essentially it.
Well, my thought is, if you're shy some, 67 square feet or something.
Yeah, 127.
127, okay. You know, perhaps in the middle of the rather large driveway and parking area, you know, that you could have maybe a roundabout or maybe a column of nothing, which would help collect some of the local water right there too, you know, in the middle, and, you know, that might help. You probably could get, you know, 127, maybe even 128 square feet or something like that.
By just putting a little circle or something.
Well, the circle may not be as convenient as you want, but, you know.
Some shape.
You can work out, yeah, the shape.
I would concur. There are a variety of approaches that we can take.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll look at all those. That's a, that's a good suggestion now. That's a good suggestion, so we'll look at that.
Okay. Sabrina, you want to run through your comments?
Sorry. It is a question, in accordance with state environmental policy review act. The applicant had submitted coverage calculations worksheets in comparing them with the 2014 coverages. It is, there is, the building coverage is adequate and in conformance, but the development coverage is 127 square feet over what was previously approved by the board. And then the only other comment is that the applicant should show the clearing and grading limit line on the site plan and make sure it's labeled. That's it.
Okay, great.
Right.
It is all zoning compliant.
Yep. Bob, you got some thoughts, comments?
Uh, sure. Thank you, Dennis. There's no way I can. ST1, basically, there was some typos in the amount of stormwater runoff amounts, which Alan will fix, A and B. Drainage areas getting equal up, but hopefully it will be solved in 2014. ST2, the original plan showed two swales, one swale every one, and you might want to chime in a little bit on why it's not needed. But first of all, the ones to the north and east of the property, I would recommend that's in a specific rate, which is kind of critical to be maintained. So, I kind of mentioned it in my last memo, the last application, so I would recommend that, basically, the declaration be prepared, town council review to make sure, maintain a perpetuity, which is what happens sometimes if you don't do that. I've seen it happen time to time again, the landscape is covered, it's over, and then you have nothing.
Right.
I would recommend in fact, we should be submitted to town council. That's ST2. You want to chime in on why the other one isn't required?
Right. The, the other, there was a drainage swale in the 2014 plan, and that was, this is to the south of the house. And the reason that was there was the, one of the regulations of the New York City BEP Watershed Regulation is, section 1839, says that if you have a drainage area which is greater than 20% impervious surfaces, you must have two dissimilar stormwater practices in series in order to treat the runoff, unless it's infiltration. In this one, because it's not infiltration, I'll just say, that southern swale was there to sort of direct runoff into the stormwater management basin so as to keep it under 20%. When I did the calculation of this drainage area going into this basin, it actually came out to about 18.5%, but I'll provide the number. And when I saw that, I realized it wasn't necessary to have that second drainage swale. And what I'll do is, I'll present the drainage area in that to show that to be the case, but that's.
So, the swale is not there naturally, it's something that you'd have to create.
Correct. It was a created swale.
But it's not required.
Right.
And you'll demonstrate that and put it in.
Yes, I'll put it in the stormwater report. And I'll, I'll actually just insert it in there so you can see exactly why it was in the 2014 approval but not needed here. Okay, that I will do.
Thank you. Couple of other comments. ST4, basically, obviously, it's over more than will make the disturbance. You'll have to get the MS4 acceptance form based on that. Just chime in on the clearing and grading. I know there were, there's two clearing gradings, there was the original one, that was like twice as big, it was like even 2,000, and then you have the new one. I'm just making certain we're on the right page here. Which one is the planning board going to approve? The old one or the new one?
Well, I'm assuming they're going to approve the one from, I thought, I'm just asking the word, from this plan, which is.
About 47,000. I just want to make sure the planning board approves the right one, so when they look at it, it's good to go.
Mm-hmm. Well, again, I think the comment was, we wanted to make sure we saw it on the drawing, I think Sabrina raised that.
Right. I'll make sure.
I think they showed it, it's the limited disturbance line, it's on the plan.
And that's going to stay afterwards as well?
I would think that, I would think, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, that's going to be the new clearing and grading.
And that's essentially what we approved last time. It's not.
It's much less.
Oh, so I asked you that before, if there were changes to the clearing and grading.
Isn't that true, Alan?
I'm just trying to think which.
Which one?
Which one do you want? I believe it's only you and the planning board.
2003, 2004.
Just wanted to bring it through.
I don't know whether I should show them all.
Yeah. We're at a loss here, unfortunately.
These are old trick questions.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Laurie Matthews, who was involved in this and who was really, really good at, you know, legal stuff and engineering.
If you keep the old one.
She left town, you're lucky. I don't know how you got her to leave town, but she did, so.
If you keep the old one.
Kept coming up here for applications, that's why.
If you just show it on the map and keep it the same, and you don't need a declaration.
Right.
But if the planning board wants the new one, they'll have to show an amended and get a declaration, that's what I want.
Okay. Well, why don't I at least illustrate it, what I had from the 2014 plan? I'll make sure it's on the plan, so it's clear.
Okay. And then illustrate any kind of change that you want, if you want.
Right. That's fine.
I think that's.
Right. I'll make sure that is.
That you wanted, why, right? You said why?
I didn't say why.
I was trying to figure.
We don't ask why anymore. Afraid the answers.
Perhaps others.
Not from Alan, I said, no, I disagree.
I just had a couple of notes, sorry.
Yeah, I see.
Right. ST5, I believe the original DEP permit expired, they're good for five years, but that's more of a formality, you'll get that for the new applicant. That's ST5.
Does that require a new application or you're suggesting an extension?
Well, but there's a change in the building configuration.
Yeah, I'll, yeah.
It's even laps.
Let me check this.
Yeah, we'll check with the DEP.
Okay.
That's fine.
As long as they're aware of it, get something from them, just to demonstrate that. I got GC1, just give me some sort of certification that that 1,500 gallon pump chamber and the gallon, 1,000 gallon overflow is not required, because they know, counting those regulations on that. I saw on your sizing, you showed it was okay, but I just need something from you that it meets Westchester County rules and regulations, because they regulate that.
Right. They, they don't, it used to be, they requested over, an overflow tank. They don't now. What they want to do is have, if you have a pump chamber, they want the entire, one day's flow, from the time the alarm goes off, saying, you know, pump's not working, it's not working. From that point, they want a full day of flow.
Ah.
Figuring within one day, you know, they get prepared or whatever the case is, so.
Sounds reasonable.
That's what current policy is, and I'll just.
Just memorialize that and indicate that on there, so we know it's in conformance. GC2, I couldn't read the pump curve design calculations you did, it's too small, so just make that an if I love.
Yes.
You needed the MagnaFon class.
I don't want you to mention.
And then GC3, obviously, you're going to need the sanitary sewer connection permit, from the commission of public works in this office. Contact the building, that will be required, that administration keeps track of all the tie-ins to all the sanitary sewer. And that's, thanks for my comment.
Dennis, you had some comments?
Yeah, I had, when I first received the plan and I had a conversation with Alan, I had in front of me, I guess, what was considered the mitigation planting plan for the Meadow Hill subdivision dated, looks like 2017 was the last date. So, so the plantings that were included as part of the plan for this house seem to just finish off the required wetland mitigation in terms of, that I guess were never installed. So, I'm obviously in support of that, because that I believe is required to be completed. So, I, I'm obviously made comments, just generally saying, well, then I guess we would need, you know, whatever landscaping is proposed for the home, as well as I know that there's a proposed pool, you know, that would have to be provided. But then, in sort of continuing to think outside the box, and as the one who probably would receive a potential complaint after the construction of such a beautiful home and staring out at some of the dead trees on the cul-de-sac, if there's other plantings that need to be addressed that are part of the overall subdivision and happen to be sort of in the pathway of, you know, where you're going to have construction, mobilization and whatnot, it would seem logical that at the conclusion of this construction, that that replanting should be tied in, weaved in somehow to, to this, because it just makes sense, you know, from a practical standpoint. I think it's going to make sense from a, someone who just moved in and is looking out, you know, the front door standpoint. So, that was just something I was proposing, if that's feasible, to work that out.
Okay.
As I sit next to counsel, who may chime in at any point.
Apparently, we have someone out in the ether who has a hand up, and it's not a public meeting, public hearing, but we'll take a comment or a question, I guess.
Yeah, we'll take it on the premise that it's understood that this is not the way it should run, this is the way we like to run it, and, and hopefully, there would be no repetition on the questions and everything.
Yep. So, I don't know how we tune in the person, but do we know how?
Carrie, can you, Carrie Lotman, his name is Jeff Gugic.
Okay. If you can identify yourself and give us your address.
Yeah, hi, I'm Jeff Gugic. I live at 20 North Place. I'm, we live at the property that's just to the southwest of this subject property. So, in, my comments sort of echo the other gentleman's comments who just spoke about landscaping. If you look at the plans, there's the stormwater management basin number one. So, in some of the original plans, going back, you know, 10 years and as this committee's approved, called for various landscaping around these groundwater management systems or stormwater management systems. Really, with regard to stormwater basin one, they're really somewhat lacking. The basin itself, you know, was fenced. I grant you, property owners in this town have the right to fence, however, there's, there's no screening around this. And so, I, I would just suggest that, you know, trees be put in, or be recommended that trees be put in, similar to the tree line that was, that's, that's put in behind the house to block the residence view of the other storm, stormwater management system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that's a good suggestion, Alan, so if you take that.
Yeah, I agree.
There's a, I want to ask Dennis something. Dennis, excuse me. There's, I think, an excellent example, and I could be wrong from a technical point of view, but just from an aesthetic point of view of how these, these basins could be landscaped. I don't know whether this was done as part of a specific landscape plan or it just grew up all by itself. But there's one at Amsterdam Park, which is sort of near the parking lot, the end of the parking lot. I don't know if you know this basin back there, but it's landscaped just beautifully at different times of year, right? Different sort of, you know, flowers come and go and, and the autumn colors, and there's a variety of landscape materials in there, which is just absolutely stunning. And it's also great habitat, the way it's grown in. And so, I don't know whether we have a program that was used at Amsterdam Park specifically that could inform what could be done here, but I think it's an interesting model to look at. I don't know whether it's appropriate to the function of this particular basin or not, but I think that it's aesthetically, it's just fabulous. And it could, maybe it could be done beyond the boundary specifically of the basin itself and on the other side of what may be a fence line in order for that to screen the fence if a fence is put in.
Yeah, it's funny, because what Nick and I were discussing, I mentioned that, I mean, these two basins, when you drive up, they, they both have different looks to them because of the landscaping or lack thereof is just mentioned. So, I guess there's always opportunity. I, it's interesting, because the one that is closer to where, I guess that's number So, I guess there's always opportunity. I, it's interesting, because the one that is closer to where, I guess that's number two, closer to where the house is proposed, it is, you know, it's storm water, but yes, there's a cacophony of amphibian calls. I believe I saw a couple red-winged blackbirds leaving there. So, you know, as things just grow in and grow up, it's sort of functions as, as a wetland, which is, which is fine. And, you know, some of that, Alan, you could speak to this. Some of that could be by design, in terms of what receives more storm water, what has more depth, what has more of a pool area. You know, obviously, you can't, it's not, it's not a mix and match necessarily. But I guess there is an impression that when you first drive in, you can sort of pick one out easier than the other visually, in terms of its configuration and what its, what its purpose is.
I, I think if the, you know, it depends on sort of what you're, what you're trying to solve for. And what you have to solve for, clearly, is the function, right? The water function. But if you're also solving for the landscape in general, right? And these, these things actually could be very, very attractive features in the landscape.
I absolutely agree.
If they're handled properly.
Yes, I absolutely agree. And I think basin number two comes off as much more attractive. It's actually, there's a lot of Typholatophylia bulrush, which has just sort of found its way in. I mean, I've seen bulrushes growing in some strange locations. They'll just show up. But it has actually helped a lot with, but it's just by design, the way this basin is designed, because it's got a micro pool, a for bay and a micro pool, separated by a fairly shallow water area. And that's what's really helped for the amphibian population, whereas basin number one is just a larger basin in a much more challenging location, you know, it just is. And so, I think it was part of the difference in design. And I agree, you know, we certainly had discussions with Unicorn previously about basin number one, and providing, you know, additional landscape there, and just like, even the trees that are planted in the street.
Right, exactly.
There was plenty of discussion about that. And, you know, I'll just say, it's not always executed like you want. I'll just leave it at that. It does happen.
Thank you.
Good. But I, I absolutely agree, and that's fine. Something we'll discuss about how to address.
Great.
Especially for basin number one, Mr. Gugic identified.
Thank you.
Because that, that's the one that's closest to him. I think it's quite a distance from.
Right.
His house up to, where this new house is. We have to go to public? I've seen it so many times. How many times you want me back?
You'll come anyway.
I'll come anyway.
Here's the thing. I think that Alan can submit whatever plans and adjustments need to be made to the plans in time for the September meeting. So, we have some time.
Yeah.
If the board is willing to do it. But we would need, we need to make reference to revised plans in order to notice the public hearing.
Right.
Sure.
It's plenty of time to.
Yes, there is. There's plenty of time to do it.
It seems to me that, you know.
Put it in a first, put it, can we get, would you be ready for the first meeting in September?
Well, the question is, the landscaping plan, are you going to be able to put something together for Dennis, to address Dennis's concerns? Because that seems to be subject of public concern.
Right.
Right.
I would, I would think so, but it's something we'll have to discuss with. Because we have to notice it and have that available for the public.
Well, you'd have to, yeah, exactly. So.
What is the submission deadline for that? So, if I may ask?
Just a moment.
Tomorrow.
I thought you said yesterday. I'm assuming it's like mid-August.
Isn't it like August 13th?
But I figured I would ask the question.
That's a Friday. 13th is, is a Friday.
Just a minute. September.
It's much easier with a slide rule, isn't it, Bob?
August 13th.
August 13th.
August 13th.
Yeah, that's three weeks away. Let's do that.
All right.
If there's any issue with that, I'll, I'll let Sabrina know in the first meeting. Do we need a motion, then, to set the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion moved this forward to set the public hearing for the first meeting in September? Where the date is August 13th for the materials? September 8th?
September 8th is the meeting date.
Okay. Thank you. Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Very good. For the next meeting, should I do this remote, or?
No, we, we should have computer.
Okay, good.
Alan, bring in your slide rule.
But you can join remotely. We're not, we're not requiring applicants to come in person.
I understand.
I don't know if you think you have any sway, more sway.
No, I don't. I'd just say, it's, it varies across the county.
We'll be hurt if you don't show up.
That's true. I will see you then.
Okay, very good. Enjoy. Thank you.
Good night.
Yep, good night. Okay, our next item is a discussion item. This is the Chappaqua Crossing, East Village, 480 Bedford Road. Street naming and discussion of retaining wall. All right. Nick, enjoy.
Thank you for your input, Nick.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's nice to see everybody. Mark Weingarten, partner in law firm of Delvalo Danelle and Weingarten Weizenwiedeker. On behalf of Toll Brothers, the contract vendee for the East Village and the project known as Chappaqua Crossing. We have two things on the agenda this evening. Mr. Chairman, would you, is your preference on the order? Would you want to do street naming first?
Yeah, should I do that first? Yeah, fine.
Okay, so we submitted a letter to you dated June 23rd for the road A, B, and D, C, E, and G, F, and H. And we're hoping that they are acceptable to the board.
Is there something with Carriage?
Yeah, what's the deal there?
Is there a specific reference?
I'm, I'm here with Greg Otis, the Senior Land Development Manager of Toll Brothers. Greg, why don't you step up?
The name Carriage kind of is orientated to the homes.
Speaking of microphone, you can raise it if you wish.
Or you can take it off, by the way. I think you can take it off.
The mask, and you picked that up. There you go. Pull it out. Pull it out.
No, no, you hurt yourself.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, town staff.
Trying to make you comfortable. I don't want you to.
You can take the microphone out.
Just pull it, pull it in. There you go.
It's been a long day. The significance of Carriage really is associated with the style of homes. A lot of our homebuyers associate the townhomes as carriage homes. So, that's really where the name stemmed from. So, Carriage kind of carried through.
That makes sense. Do you mean why you would name one of the streets Carriage, or maybe the main? But why are they all named Carriage?
Well, we, we actually originally thought of not really naming any of the roads inside of the development. And we actually were going to try to reference the main road coming in, just having unit numbers originally. But we thought that that might cause confusion with the post office and emergency 911. So, we do, we did speak with the town clerk's office. We did procure a list of all the street names in the town. We do note that you do have a Carriage Hill in town. So, I'm also here to offer the name Greely as an alternative for you. If that was a name that might have more significance to the town.
You know, I, sorry.
I, I just have a question. Did you, have you talked about road names and numbering with the post office?
We have not.
Yeah, they, I mean, because even the East Carriage, South Carriage, West Carriage, that also might pose difficulties with mail delivery?
I, you know, I, I don't know about the post office, but you, you could be right about that. And, you know, if I was, if somebody said, "Go to my house, I'm on South Carriage Lane," and, and, you know, I'm 72 years old, and I'm going to be, well, was that South Carriage or East Carriage or West Carriage? You know, what, where am I supposed to go again?
Well, there are sections of Carriage and Carriage here. It's like First and First, you know?
Right. We would provide adequate signage.
No, I'm sure. I'm sure.
So, I guess I'm suggesting that there's, I think that there's, there, for me, there would be an inherent unnecessary confusion. And then, secondly, however, I don't think it's, you know, up to me to tell you what to name your streets. I would suggest that, for me, it's not important that you find specific references to Newcastle, or to Chappaqua. You know, Greely, you know, we already have a Greely Street. So, I think that, that it's up to you, but those references aren't important to me. I just think that clarity is important.
Greely? I don't believe.
Greely, I mean, town.
There's a North Greely and South Greely.
Right, yeah, the, the north and south.
Right, you can't, you can't name something Greely, because we have a north and south, and people refer to it as Greely.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, so there's a colloquialism here that needs to be considered. But I think most importantly is post office and emergency services. Making sure 911 is not confused.
Well, so we did reach out to the building department.
That's not the fire department.
Okay, so the fire department is issuing the 911.
Police, fire, ambulance, right?
Yeah.
They drive trucks.
The fire and ambulance.
I'll check with the police chief, dude.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Can I, um?
So, these are the proposed names that we would like to proceed with.
Well, I, I, if, if you want some local references, I'd pick Reader's Digest. I mean, that's the history of the site. That's the real history here. And you have Wallace Court, which I think is, is probably, for me, the appropriate move.
Okay.
But there could be other references, a rich menu of things you could pick.
So, we would, we would accept Reader's Digest for road A.
All right.
We would accept Wallace Way for road C.
But there's, sorry, there is a Reader's Digest Road already.
Is there?
Is there?
I don't.
Well, that was the original road.
That road off of, off of the Sawmill, isn't that called Reader's Digest Road?
That's the original Loop Road that goes around the site.
Is Reader's Digest Road.
Is Reader's Digest Road.
It's Loop now.
Goes through the site.
Yes. While it comes, if you come, if you go off the Sawmill, and then you go left, that's Reader's Digest.
Okay, so that's already taken.
Right, this is not a continuation of that road, right?
No, no, these are separate roads.
No, because that road goes around and goes in front of the Wallace Auditorium.
I, I just think.
Between the parking lot and.
For me, the most important thing is just avoid any potential confusion. And I think that there's just, you're just, I think that we're just asking for trouble with the north, south, east, west, according to, I mean, it seems unnecessary to me. And so, I think that there could be a better way to handle this. I mean.
Again, we're not trying to impose our, you know, it's, it's really, you know, your taste is center. But I, I think, I think the emergency services and post office, especially emergency services, is really an issue.
Yeah, it's, you know, the, one of the problems I had looking at it is that Carriage Street and East Carriage Lane are both east, east-west roads. So, that, to me, was, how, how can you be sure what it is? I would suggest that the South Carriage, the ones that go around a loop, I don't know what to do with those, but, you know, because they don't, if it's West Carriage Lane, some of it's going north, south.
But, you, you know, again, you can work that out. It's, we don't want to hold you up for this kind of stuff. It's crazy. I was hoping that we'd see something like Charney Lane, so we'd have something like, Danny Lane, we have a song that we could use. Yeah, right. Felix Lane, something like this.
We will revisit that for you.
Yeah.
Revisit it.
Okay. Exactly. Really, I'm almost embarrassed to take this kind of time on it, because it really is not something that's really that critical, except that somehow, some way, you found a way to make it. Something that we really didn't anticipate. Sorry, but.
No, that's okay. We will find something non-controversial on this project.
Well, I, I just. Now, wait a minute. Now, you're, maybe you're going a little too far. Non-controversial, as opposed to less controversial, might be, you know, the way to go.
It's going with avoidance first and mitigation last.
So, we'll take those comments on their advisement and move forward on those.
I'm sorry, one, just one question. This is, I guess, for Sabrina. Does this, would this have to go to the town board, naming streets in town?
No, we looked that up. The streets are not going to be dedicated, are they?
It's in your resolution.
It's within your.
It's because it's private roads.
It's in your, it's in your.
Yeah, private roads, but it is in your.
Yeah, I understood that. I just.
No, not in town.
Actually, did look for that this afternoon.
Okay.
The other issue came up with the two retaining walls. We refer to them as the eastern and western retaining wall. We have the eastern wall, which is the one that's closer to Cowden Lane, and the western one, which is closer to the Loop Road. With regard to the eastern wall, you may recall that we put in an environmental analysis back in October of 2019. In that environmental analysis, we stated that we believe the existing vegetation would screen the proposed East Village townhomes in eastern facing retaining walls, even during winter foliage conditions. And we proposed to utilize a modular block retaining wall system that would have a stone wall appearance, stone-like appearance. And we provided an exhibit which showed what that modular stone wall would look like. Again, the wall there, the one that we believe would not be seen. With regard to the.
Do we, do you recall the color we, we decided on?
We can show you the exhibit.
Okay.
Why don't we hand that up? This is the exhibit that was contained in the environmental analysis that was submitted in October of 2019 in connection with the review of these.
So, this is very similar to what we see on Washington Avenue, for example, right?
Yeah.
I believe that's correct.
Very similar in texture, not color.
Is this a grayer color, I guess?
Yes, it is.
Right?
Yes, so this, this would be a three-color blend.
If you're going to speak, you need to use this. Oh, yeah, sorry.
This is a three-color blend of gray, tan, and kind of a darker gray.
So, what kind of a stone is intended to replicate? Is there a specific reference, or is it?
This, this is actually a, the product is called Ready Rock, and it's the ledge stone appearance. So, I do have one more exhibit for you.
And again, as you're handing that out, Bob, we've looked at the structural engineering, and this, this composition is perfectly fine. It works.
They submitted a structural analysis. They submitted all.
So, is this sand cemented glyphs?
They did a peer review from another structural analysis to make sure the original one is not.
This one.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We have two conversations.
No, Greg was.
Sorry, Bob.
No, they, they did a tremendous job on the structural analyses. I'm perfectly fine with it, as far as the structural characteristics of the wall and etc.
Good.
Great. Thank you.
There was a second question that came from Member Charlie, which belonged to the type of use of the ledge stones. So, Greg, do you want to answer?
Settle.
That package that you're looking at now, you can see, the top picture on the first page is the color representation that we are proposing.
The Ozark Bluffs beige.
Uh, no, this one is actually more of a, a custom blend color.
Oh.
The, the alternatives that you could select from are shown on page two. However, we would like to take that extra step to provide what is shown on page one.
So, is there someplace locally where you've used this, that we could go see?
Unfortunately, the color, no, because that's a kind of a custom color. And this actually is one of the top-selling colors of Ready Rock this year, in 2020. So, we've worked with Ready Rock Corporate to actually get that color scheme that's utilized. So, that's a special color.
Wait a minute, I'm confused. I thought.
This color or this color?
That's the combination of the gray, tan, and darker gray.
So.
That is correct.
Let me follow up. I thought you said that it's, it's being used a lot now.
It is, yes.
So, but you're also saying that it's a custom color that you developed with them?
No, no, no. We did not develop with them. It's a custom color above and beyond the standard colors that are stamped on page two.
So, if it's, but there's no installation of it locally anywhere that we could see?
Not of the color, no.
What color is in Pleasantville?
Pleasantville is more of like an off, it's kind of got some purple-blue hues. It's more of a purple-red undertone. And that was a color out of, you know, kind of the 2016 playbook.
Yeah, man. Don't do that, Coach.
Noted.
Remind us again, on the Cowden Lane wall, does that wall just go up sheer as one, one facade, or is it stepped back at all?
It is stacked. It is tiered, yes.
It is tiered. So, we could also have some, some sort of vegetation in the tiered areas, similar to what you've done? How, is it tiered back enough?
No, there would be no.
With vines or something like this?
At least, we've got some sort of weeping vines over the top.
Right.
Correct. And that, that actually, you could have that?
Right. Yes, it would.
Yeah, that's awesome.
It would make it much more, even more invisible. I, I agree with Counselor with his comments about, you know, the visibility from Cowden. That area's grown up a lot. Well, it's been 15 years, so yes, it has grown up a lot. We're ready to cut it again. But it's, it's, I, I think it would be really messed.
Yeah, it's up that you can work with the planning board and Dennis on something. So, Dennis, what type would you recommend to put on top and have it weed down to cover the walls?
Non-invasive, please. We have enough of ours.
Yeah, not, not invasive weeds.
I deserve the right to do some further research for all those reasons. Exactly.
Very polite answer.
Also, just to clarify, I think the question arose during the initial plan review of the walls regarding a capstone on the Ready Rock wall. Ready Rock actually has a specific.
Ready Rock actually has a specific top block, if you will. And that specific top block allows for topsoil to be installed on top of the block. Let me just see if I can find it right here for you. Okay, so how do they approach? Can you kind of see how the lip rises right here on the front? And then that way you can fill in topsoil all the way, almost up to the face. So around four to five inches.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so you'd be able to have green lawn.
Would that be an opportunity to put the type of weedy material on top that'd have it grow on down?
It would have the opportunity. However, we are kind of locked into the approved landscape plans, but it would be grassed. So that is, you know, something that...
It's like an infinity pool.
All right.
I look at it as a reverse blind punk bottle. But there's an indentation on the other way. I like the liner. Yes, exactly.
What's the location of the western retaining wall?
Well, that's a different situation. That's the one that's on the Loop Road.
Right.
Very, very physical.
One on the east side of the road, one on the west side of the road.
So would you do that coping piece on the retaining wall on the Loop Road side?
No, that wall, this... So when we get to that wall...
Do we want to finish on this? Do we like this color for the Cowden side?
It's okay.
Because I want these on the plans, so you want to get them. I know which one to use.
Do you think... Are you okay with it?
I mean, I love it.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, it's fine.
We think that the ledge stone appearance is one of the most attractive versus a flat.
The ink could do better with papered walls.
It's fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
If it works for you, yeah, it's fine.
No cement.
Great, we appreciate that.
Can you incorporate all the comments I had?
Yes.
Because there's no confusion with the contractor orders.
Correct, we classify that as the ledge stone. There's a color scheme right here that represents that. Thank you.
Or I guess this is Reader's Digest Way. Is that the name of this road? The official name?
Not yet, I guess.
Reader's Digest Road.
Reader's Digest Road, that's what it currently is.
It's West West Carriage Way.
We're talking about...
I know, just... Right, so these are the two subject Loop Roads walls here, right in here.
Right.
So those Loop Roads are the natural stone walls.
Right.
Okay. What we've done is we utilize ONG mason suppliers by one of the larger rock suppliers in the area. I'm just going to pass this to Bob real quick.
Just so you know, guys, when we did the wall out in Millwood, I used the ONG Liberty Hill. And I brought actually boxes in like Greg is doing and showed it to the town boards. And I just showed them three or four samples, and that's what they did.
That's in the reconstruction.
They make a really good material wall. A lot of contractors I speak to use ONG.
That was the reconstruction of that wall, right?
That is correct.
Because the new... The first one was not so hot.
I used Liberty Hill. Yeah, the first one wasn't too good.
I'm going to pass you two unnamed pictures. I'll tell you why.
Real deal.
So we found through ONG, and I circled them for you, Bob. I'll give you the... Okay, so the very first page is called Getty Gray, okay? And I took a picture of the... I had them send me pictures of the palettes.
Right.
Because a little sample board, two by two, I'm going to give you the best indication of what is actually going to be delivered to the site, okay? On page now, you'll kind of notice this is more of a gray-blue 20% tan, kind of, okay? And then on page two is what's called the Mott Vale. The Mott Vale is more of a brownish color with a hint of gray or blue, okay? Our preference is the Getty Gray is what we would recommend. We feel that that kind of blends in more with the surrounding features. And then our second option for your consideration would be the Mott Vale. I did bring in two kind of samples, representative samples for you.
Excuse me, Greg, just one question. Is this the wall stone or the veneer?
So this is the thin stone. So this is going to be a varying stone that can range from anywhere from, you know, say, an inch all the way up to two inches, okay? And it's also would be defined as the mosaic pattern.
Okay, so let me ask this question because I'm not sure whether I... Are we talking about it would be a look like a laid-up wall like this? Or are you using this as sort of facade material that's cemented to?
The latter, facade material. So that would be more of a ledge stone look, the stacking vertically like that?
But you're not proposing that?
No, this is specifically the mosaic pattern, okay? And I've given Bob an original catalog and brochure.
It's okay, thank you.
You can kind of see the mosaic pattern. So it's, you know, in contrast, they offer rectangular and square stone cuts. We find that the mosaic represents more of the natural look.
Well, so this is the mosaic on the top right, but not down here? Because this is the Getty Gray down here.
They're both... Yeah, that's the...
Which one are you proposing?
That is a...
Mosaic also?
Getty Gray, yeah, these are all mosaic.
Okay.
So you can kind of see the...
It's a bigger picture of your preferred rock.
Irregular outside shape.
So they're going to be grouted and raked joints?
That is correct. The grout joints would be approximately a half inch to three-quarters of an inch grouted solid.
This is for the wall, which is, is it now 14 feet high, 16 feet?
The range is about 10 feet, 12 feet.
Do we reduce it to that when we raise the...
Yeah, when we raise the road, yeah.
Yes.
We guide it down a little bit, yeah.
That's correct.
But it's also, is it staggered again, or is it just a sheer facade?
Sheer facade.
Right, so it's not tiered?
I have it as eight and a half.
It's one wall.
Maximum, eight and a half?
Well, I'm reading from the environmental analysis.
No, I was looking at the structural plans and that. So the actual plans was about eight to 10 feet.
I think it was when they raised the road.
Yeah, it came up. It ranges from, it ranges, what, three, four feet and goes up as high?
Three, about 10.
Yeah.
Pretty substantial.
And on the other side, how high is it on the other side, down toward the parking lot?
Six, six, six to seven.
Okay.
But they did a whole local security analysis.
Yes, on both sides, right?
Ranges, it ranges, it's up to there.
Yeah. Did you see it?
I did.
Okay.
So I did...
Did you see it, Dennis?
It's all right, it's not botanical, nobody's...
Normally, we deal with living things.
All right, so you can kind of see on the Getty Gray, you're going to get that tint of tan-beige in there. So I picked a sample that kind of had both.
It's just a lot of mite in it, but is this granite?
This is... Yeah.
And it's...
So this is a kind of a darker, kind of like the blue-gray wall.
Yeah, I like it.
Here's your contrast.
So you're talking about mixing these?
This is metamorphic rock. No, no.
It's been compressed.
This is more of the Mott Vale.
Yeah, this is sandstone.
Almost like a schist.
So if you wanted to go with a more of a brown-looking wall versus a blue wall...
The thing that we were talking earlier about natural references and local references. I mean, the stone around here is really more in the range of, you know, granites rather than limestones and sandstones and sedimentary rock, right? Because it's all been scraped out by the glaciers, and that's what's left. So to me, I mean, if you walk around the woods here, or even, you know, you could drive around town, and you see the leftover stone walls from... And they're all sort of laid up dry, stone that they found in the field. And it's more in this family of things than it is in this family.
Yep, and that's... We would prefer the Getty Gray. Getty Gray.
Yeah.
And that's how we would like to define it.
So it won't have the orange-colored look to it, like, to your point of you'll...
Yeah.
Like a granite-type stone.
Yeah, it'd be like it was always here.
No, I agree.
Like it came from here.
Right out of the ground.
Yeah, like it came from here.
Right.
But you know it's an architect, obviously.
Yeah, so wasn't the original wall in Millwood more in the brown color?
The original wall that was built down in, out there in Millwood was an orange stone.
Yeah.
Didn't fit in. What we used was Liberty Hill, which is more granite, more gray.
Much better.
And that's what you're recommending, and it makes perfect sense.
Yep.
So now, the other consideration is whether it's put up as a facade material.
Right.
Or whether it is, has more of a natural laid-up look. In other words, more like photograph. And...
Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. So I believe that you can, in front of a concrete retaining wall, you can also sort of lay up stone material in this fashion, right? As a facade, right, material, rather than having it applied flat with all the grout joints and so on. And I don't know whether it could be laid up 10 feet high without grouting it. I don't know how you would attach it. I don't know whether that could be done.
Yeah, that's a structural issue that I'd have to look at. You know, if you build up, if you have a full wall stone, there's a lot of weight.
Right.
Coming up that, then you've got 10 feet of stone, 150 pounds per cubic foot.
Well, you'd need a ledge on the footing in order to hold it.
That's why they use the stone veneer. It's not as much weight. This is very thin. It's only two inches, about much weight to it.
And does the stone veneer, when it's applied this way, is it tied mechanically back to the wall?
Yes, they do.
So it's not just glued or something like this, it's actually...
Yes, they do have anchors to it that they space sporadically throughout with the stone veneer, with the thin stone veneer. That's thin stone veneer. They've got three types. Wall stone is false, full-size stone, which is very heavy. Then you have the four-inch veneer, then you've got the two-inch veneer. Cabo up there used the two-inch veneer up there on 91. It looks very nice. We'll take a look, big guys. They get that from Bedford Stone.
Where?
Up on 91 Bedford, the new apartment.
Yeah, okay.
He used the two-inch veneer from Bedford Stone.
Okay.
Which is rather...
I'll take a look.
So it would be problematic structurally when you want wider stone to be put on the front. They'd have to probably possibly go through their structural guys.
Yeah.
You'd have to, you'd have to put a lip on the footing in order to hold that up.
Yeah, there'd be some items they'd have to revise.
And other tiebacks in order to do it.
Sorry, Bob, that 91 that's on the retaining wall on the north end of the property, is that what you're talking about?
On the east side, behind the parking lot.
Okay.
And parking's easy.
That's up there now. You walk in, obviously.
Yeah, okay.
It's gorgeous. Drop dead gorgeous.
Okay.
Yeah, so just the project on Washington Avenue, right? Which has a lot of its manufactured stone, right?
That's the Ready Rock product.
Right.
That's what that product is, what's proposed over on the east side there.
Understood, right. To me, it just, it looks like it's not natural, right? I mean, it's just the way the material is and...
On Washington?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't build a stone wall that way, just wouldn't, of that size. You just would never do it that way.
Is that what we also have on Route 117, where the intersection?
That is correct, similar.
The Ready Rock wasn't also, it's in the intersection?
Lot walls.
Yeah.
I mean, it might be fine for a garden wall, but for a retaining wall, you'd never build it. You wouldn't lay up stone that way, right, to hold anything up. And you wouldn't lay up a natural stone as a facade material in the application we're talking about in order to hold anything up, right? It's clear that it's for appearance sake rather than... And that's why laying it up this way, to me, looks more like an actual retaining wall because it, there's a depth to it, and that's the way retaining walls are built. But I recognize the practicality of the problem. And so I think, from my opinion, I think if we go with this color...
Well, Greg?
With, yeah, with the application where you try and minimize the grout joints. And the grout color is really important as well.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you about it.
Sure, we can, we can go with like a lighter gray if you...
You should try and match this.
You want to try to match that.
I would try and make the...
Darker gray, wouldn't you say?
The joints go away, yeah.
Okay.
I would be... We can do that. How about I put up two mock boards for you over at the site with the really gray and two different color grout joints for you?
Okay.
And the, you know, the benefit too, I believe, with the grout joints is also to protect the wall longevity.
The grout will make a big difference in how it looks, how it stands out, so it's critical that they go.
Yep.
So I'd be happy to do two mock boards for you.
That'd be great.
To show you a different color of joints.
That's a good idea.
And, you know, if you're okay approving the stone color, because what we'd like to do is go ahead and try to...
Get it ordered?
Right now, the material industry is experiencing longer lead times. So if you're okay with that gray, go ahead and lock that in with ONG. And then we can always, the grout coloring, we can always accommodate the board. And if it's okay, I'd like to coordinate that with the town engineer to let him know that the... We have no issues with the Felix or Dave putting up those boards.
Oh, I thought you were changing the name of the road again.
Yeah, what happened to Felix?
It's going to be like three areas, so you can get a good representation of that.
Sure, that'd be terrific.
So, and then my only other question for consideration would be the capstone for this wall. I have two options for the board to consider. Option number one would be to utilize the same stone and carry it right over. Or option number two would be a two-inch-thick, 12-inch-wide bluestone cap. I would be happy to show that image on the mock-up boards if you'd love to consider that.
We did the bluestone out here on the, I think that Bill Spade designed. It looks very nice.
I think so, yeah.
Bluestone is very nice. It's a nice character to it. And the architects most support it.
We'd be happy to see it, right, if you're going to show us a couple of options.
If you had a preference now that would help us begin the ordering process?
Well, if we're voting, I would, I can, I think I can visualize what we're talking about. Although, obviously, it'd be helpful to see it, and then I'll go look at the project. I would say no.
No, on bluestone? Okay.
Right.
Return the wall.
Just return the wall.
Okay.
Because capstone, to me, is more sort of a landscape application for a wall that you're going to sit on and you're going to look down on. If, I think if we just turn the stone to the top, it looks more natural as sort of a block ledge that's there. That's my feeling.
We do support that.
If you want my vote, that's my vote.
Yeah, actually, we do support that more than the bluestone cap, what we do with data or...
I'd be inclined to go with the continuation of the stone, without the bluestone.
Me too.
I'm not going to go against these guys.
You can contribute.
You've never been so persuasive, ever. So this is something that really just goes into the plans. Do we require a formal approval of this? Is it just something that goes in the plans? Right, right.
That's great, thank you.
I think it's fantastic.
Thank you for telling us.
I appreciate that.
Really important.
Put notes on the wall plan so we know.
Correct.
Right. Right. And so you'll coordinate with Bob in terms of when this mock board will be ready?
If I followed up with an email to you with those specifications, and then with your confirmation, that would have been a good start.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Super.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Yep, very good.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
I was just going to say, who'd have thought it?
My apologies.
Too bad Felix isn't here.
Well, with the colors and everything, you could, there's some names.
Greystone Way.
Yeah, you could have Greystone Way. I mean.
Thank you, Mark.
Likewise.
Okay, we move now to a couple of requests for extensions of time. The first one is Singh, 15 Heathco Drive, application for subdivision approval, lot line amendment, merger, wetland permit, tree removal permits, stormwater permit, 15 Heathco Drive, actions under considerations of granting of the time extension. As I understand it, there are no issues from staff in terms of granting these extensions that they are moving forward, they, you know. Okay, any issues with anyone on these?
I am.
If not, is there a motion to grant the Singh extension as requested?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next one is 767 King Street, Chiselhurst subdivision, lot number six, 767 King Street, request for extension of approval, site development plan. And again, I think one of these is retroactive by a couple of days. And then another one is anticipatory of one that comes up in August, and we're not going to be here. So it's a package deal to get this done and extend it to, where are we extending it? I thought I saw somewhere here, October?
Yeah.
October 4th? So in any event, any problems, issues with this? Moving forward, okay? Is there a motion to grant the extension requested by the applicant?
Well, wait, one question is steep slope permits. Are we okay on this?
Ooh, good point. We're going to a maximum of two years, we found out?
I think they're okay with the steep slopes.
How so? I mean, the first meeting was the 2020. And so I guess it's okay, but they should be told, I mean, someone has to research. I don't know.
No, no, please on. So wait, hang on one second, Steve and Gravel? Yes, let him speak, he's the attorney representing the applicant, Steve Gravel. His hand is up.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Hi, everyone, how are you?
Fine. We'll be better in ten minutes.
I'll try and keep it quick. Just, I don't know if you can see my comments. I did want to note that there is a distinction in the timing of the requested approvals. Specifically, we're requesting an extension till October for the time for you all to sign the site plan. And we were asking for a one-year extension for the time to get the building permit issued.
Well, does that take us into early 2022?
I believe it would take us from September 21 to September 22.
Okay.
All right, so then what about the steep slopes permit?
So the steep slopes permit, just.
What was it, the, is it a two-year permit and we can extend it up to one more year?
Correct.
So it actually is a three-year window altogether?
So I'm looking now at Section 10810 of the code, which is a steep slope permit issued by the approving authority will be valid for a period of three years, except that all permits shall expire on completion of the work specified.
With no renewal?
The approving authority may grant one six-month extension of this three-year period provided that an application is submitted at least 60 days before the expiration.
Right, so we should be fine, we should be good.
That'd be good.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to grant the extension requested by the applicant?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We move now to the.
You did both of those at the same time.
We did.
Wow.
Wow, I don't remember that, but I.
Getting faster, my old age here, I guess, I don't know.
I don't remember doing.
I don't either, my, they said we did it, we did it. So we come now to our minutes, July 6th, 2021 meeting. Anyone have any changes?
I don't.
I just had one minor one, and that would be on line nine of page two, inserting in between "and," taking it, making it "a," and just inserting the word significant environmental benefit. Anyone else anything?
No.
Yep.
Nope.
If not, as amended, is there a motion to grant, oh, to grant, to approve the minutes? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty, terrific. Is there a motion to?
Close.
Close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.